I'd like to welcome everybody here today. Mr. Robbie was, he's got a little family emergency, be a few minutes late. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Williams to do the invocation and pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. You're having to follow once again the Lord. We, we come to you in a need of prayer. Father, we, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessing that you have stored on each and every one of us. No matter how large or how small it is in your blessing, that we say thank you. Now, Father, be with us both the county commissioners this morning as we do the duties of, of this county. Be, be with us as we make our decisions for what's best for Columbia County and not one individual. Father, we ask you to look after our troops as they serve all over the world. Protect us and give us this opportunity to meet and voice our opinions and let our citizens voice their opinion as they do. Father, just, just look after us. Father, as we, we still go through this COVID, we, we know that everything is in your hands and that you have no more honors that we can bear. But most of all, Father, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. They were born of the Virgin Mary, suffered under partial punishment, but crucified dead and buried on third day, he rose from the dead. He seated at the right hand, Father, the right hand of Father Almighty, come judge the quick end of death. In his name, we act your blessing. Amen and amen.
Amen.
As you lead the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which you stand, one mighty nation under God, he is the vote of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, staff, is there any additions, additions to the agenda?
Um, maybe one from Commissioner Ford.
Yeah, I, I wanted to add one. It's for the Fort White Ellisville water extension. I wanted to discuss, have a discussion, maybe a vote on that.
The Chair.
Yes.
I would like to add one at the end of the meeting on a little street that, that by the road department I want to talk about.
Okay. Okay, seek a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay, this time, we got a presentation to the board, not requiring a vote from Mr. McCollum.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lester McCollum, the executive director of the Greater Lake City CDC. Excuse me. I don't have that thing on silence. Excuse me. We're here to present the terms of the loan for the Greater Lake City CDC and the Sweetwater project we propose to be here in Columbia County. And we passed out the loans, conditions of the loan, the terms of the loan. As soon as we get an agreement from the Board of County Commissioners to move forward with this proposal.
Commissioner McCollum, if you would, move the mic where I can hear you.
Okay. Okay, well, we are here to present the terms of the loan that we requested from the Board of County Commissioners in Columbia County to do the Sweetwater project. These are the terms that we're proposing. If there are any additions or any corrections that you would like to make to move this forward to get it approved, we would be glad to cooperate.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jordan Finkelmann. I'm the Assistant Vice President of Development for Housing Trust Group. Thank you for giving us the time to be here and speak to you about the Sweetwater Apartments Phase Two. We believe this development will make a positive, a significant positive impact on the community in Lake City and Columbia County. Rents have been rising and that's been making the need even greater. And building affordable housing is really hard, takes a lot of money and private support and, and public partnership. And just wanted to remind that we, in late 2020, went through a competitive process with the state and secured 15 million, 15.7 million dollars towards the 18.6 million dollars required to build this development. Yeah, so we're here very humbly requesting your formal approval of the business terms for this loan. And yeah, to be clear, we're not asking you to approve the loan agreement. We're just asking for the business terms so we can move forward.
You're asking for the what? Say that, I couldn't understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the business terms of the loan, not the loan agreement itself, which would be subject to negotiation and your approval and county due diligence.
So basically, you're asking us to support this resolution?
Well, the, the resolution behind was from September, so that was a non-binding approval. Just saying, you know, that you supported what we're trying to do. But now we're here asking for the business terms to be formally approved so that we can then move forward with the development and then proceed, working with the county on, with, with the staff here to finalize a loan agreement, which could take, you know, a significant amount of time. But in the meantime, we're losing valuable time to move forward with the development and we have state deadlines that we have to meet.
Well, I'm, as Mr. Foreman just stated, and I thought, we've already approved the resolution to consider this loan. But I think if I'm not mistaken, aren't you asking us to agree to a loan agreement?
To the long terms.
To the terms?
To the terms, yes.
Where the terms at?
We got them right there before you. Let us address to the County Manager David Kraus, the loan agreements are there.
Okay, but my point is, it's not on the backup material, correct? It is not. I haven't seen it until it gets out.
I got a good question, Parker. Does this obligate us in the future for any voters?
I, I, I think, you know, you do have an issue because you can use a, what's called justifiable reliance against counties. You can't use it against cities. You can use it against counties. And if y'all remember, a few years back, we had a COPCN issue where one board had said, hey, if you do X, Y, and Z, we'll give you a COPCN. The later board said, we don't want to do that. We got sued in federal court and negotiated that out because we were going to lose. So, once you tell somebody, hey, if you go do these things, we'll give you X, and they do those things, you're obligated to give X. So, if you were to adopt a motion today saying, hey, we'll, we'll allocate the three million subject to X, Y, and Z, if those things happen, you have to spend the money.
That's why I read it off there. If I could, later on, if they do achieve these goals.
And, and Mr. Chair, the, the problem with even talking about this right now is this is under our agenda as a presentation to the board, not requiring any action.
Correct.
And they're asking for action.
The reason it's under presentation to the board, not requiring action, is before we spend a lot of legal time and effort on this, we needed just a general direction of the board. Do you want to commit the attorney's time to putting this together? So they were going to present the terms to you for you to consider and determine if, you know, just a general direction of how you want us to proceed.
Well, me, for one, with no backup material, and I, I was just looking for a presentation. I guess that's why I assumed there wasn't a backup material. But other than what I'd just seen here in the last two minutes, I, I'm not giving no direction on something I haven't even read and asked questions.
So you're not doing what, Jim?
I, I'm, I can't give, you know, I can't make a, give direction on something I just seen two minutes ago, you know? As far as the agreement, because I got to follow Joel's, you know, you make a, I, I don't want to commit to anything today that's going to bore hold this board in the future, definitely my vote.
I mean, the, the resolution basically says, you know, that the, the board expresses support, and then in that resolution directed the county manager and staff to negotiate terms of any, any proposed loan or other incentive from the county to the developer for the construction of the project. And then the fourth paragraph, the resolution shall in no event be construed to obligate the county to make any loan or pay any incentive in connection with the project. Resolutions shall be construed as a promise or, shall not, excuse me, be construed as a promise or guarantee of any kind. So, in terms of the direction to negotiate terms and then have it formalized, that's already here. So, other than taking out paragraph four and saying that it is binding, or it is a commitment. But again, there, you know, the 15.7 million dollars from the state of Florida, you know, I think we talked about seeing documentation on that and having a better understanding of that program. And, because we will be subordinate to that loan, that, that will be subordinate to the Florida Public, Florida Housing Finance Corporation. Subordinate means they get their money before we get any of ours. And so, it's a concern. They do have contingencies in their terms, you know, that if, if we don't like anything about the, the terms, we can, you know, walk away in terms of negotiating the, the loan agreement. But again, that's, that's really not much different than what's here in the resolution that's already been adopted.
An action itself would be taken at a future board meeting.
My question is, I mean, I'm reading a presentation and they're asking for basically support from the board as, in a verbal quote, am I, am I not correct?
Yeah, I don't think you could vote to do this anyway.
The actual action would be at a future board meeting. This is to let you know what the terms are that they're proposing so that you have a better idea for discussions as we move forward, and any future action would have to be at a future board meeting.
Yeah. So, so we have the information, and I would say that's as far as we go on this today. It's my recommendation. And we have a chance to just look at it, discuss it further, and then we make a decision if we're going to support it or not.
Mr. Chair, we've been dealing with this, this off and on now for over four years. This organization has been, uh, uh, in the process of doing affordable housing in Columbia County. We should make a decision one way or the other and don't drag them out. Now, let's, let's either do or don't, but don't give them false hope if there's no hope. I think this board needs to, need to decide whether we're going to support it or we don't so they can move on and do something different. Commissioner Williams, I think we have shown support for this in the past. We bought them a parcel of land and there's no, there's no action on that parcel of land that we, that we bought for them. So, I mean, we have shown support for them in the past, but I think we should just move forward one project at a time. I mean, I can't remember exactly the amount of money that we spent on that parcel of land and there's no construction started on that land. Am I correct?
Yeah, you're correct. And the reason we haven't started is because you didn't get any, any motivation from the Board of County Commissioners. We're here today, this process today would finalize our eligibility to go back to the state. We have a limited timeframe to work on to get that approved. So, we need to get things done here at home. We did need, have the support of the Board of County Commissioners, so we go back to Tallahassee and finalize those loans up there to get this project done. The county has already committed, I think it was $54,000 to purchase a lot to provide affordable housing here in Columbia County, which is much needed, which is part of what the county agree, uh, do for the citizens current, uh, the current citizens and future citizens of Columbia County to provide affordable housing. We are one or two steps away, but the Board of County Commissioners assisted today to approve the, that she's going to move forward with it and help us with this $3 million. The terms we present, if you want to adjust those terms, make some kind of adjustments here, whatever pleases you, to make you comfortable to make this loan for us. The only reason we haven't developed that property is because this is one of the sticking points. We got to move past this and local government and all of such to go back to the state and finalize the loans that we've incurred and, and the terms of, we got about $17 million or 17.5, but we need the county, we need our local support to stay with us on this project to get it done.
And Mr. McCollum, for myself, I, I don't think we're saying that we're not going to be there, but, you know, me as an elected official, a steward of the taxpayer's dollars, I can't be presenting something 10 minutes ago and make a $3 million commitment. I mean, Joel, when did you receive this?
We've been here before.
Okay, so our attorney just received this also, and I got to seek his direction along with possibly our financial advisor that we just, when we talked about a while back, you know, because none of us has seen this. And, and you know, none, none of us has seen this contract.
So again, this meeting was to present the terms to the board, to bring up at either next meeting, which is next week, or the first meeting in March, or some type of discussion and decision.
And I'm good with that.
But to present you the terms so that you would have something to respond to.
Yeah, and I, I'm totally good with that. I'm totally, I'm not saying I'm against this because I'm, I'm not, I think it's a great project, or I wouldn't have voted in the previous, but for, but again, it says here in black and white that, you know, it's a presentation, no board action required, and I think y'all are asking for us to commit. Am I wrong here? Am I missing something?
Well, the loan terms are the same that we had presented with, with the addition of the subordinate clause to allow us to underwrite. So, that, that's on the, on the one pager that you have. Everything else is the same as the non-binding support letter that, that you gave us. And the, all, all we're asking for is, is just approval of the, those terms, which you've already approved, not, non-binding on the loan. But once we have that approval, we, we're still subject to, to the loan agreement, which you can, you can tell us, no, we, you know, it's, there's county due diligence that you can do. There's, you know, there's negotiation of the actual other terms, the, the language, the contract terms. And the only thing that we won't be negotiating is, we won't be negotiating the interest rate, the loan amount, the term, the subordination of it. And, and that's, that's it. Other than that, everything else is up for negotiation. And, and this is a vital part of the project. Without this, we can't move forward on, on the development. And the Florida Housing Funds, I, I heard a question about verification. We'll send you, you know, while we're going through that loan agreement negotiation, we'll provide everything that you want, including the invitation to credit underwriting for that loan. And that, that's a competitive $5 million loan of sale funding and 450,000 or so of ELI funding, which is extremely low income funding from the state. So, we'll give you all that documentation at loan agreement negotiation, and you'll have all that, you'll be able to, to sign off. If, if you're unhappy with anything, you, you don't disperse the funds to us. That's, that's, we're not asking for that right now. We're, we're just asking to be able to have, have this formal approval of the business terms so we can go back to the state's underwriter, which is Sells or Management Group, and, and then show them that we actually have a viable deal, which currently it, it's underwater. But with your loan that we will repay, we'll be able to move the development forward. So, it's not a grant, it's a loan, and that will be repaid.
Well, as Mr. Kraus suggested, I, I, I would highly recommend that your group, your attorneys, get with our county attorney who represents us and citizens and bring it back on the 17th. And, but me as a board member, just speaking for myself, I want the final, because that's why I'm bugging Joel for about a week and understand all the, but 100%, I'm, I'm for that. That'd be my recommendation.
I, I guess the question that this board needs to consider, that we've been asked to consider every time Mr. McCollum, Mr. McCollum has, has came up here and presented to us is, you know, if everything checks out, if he, he has this funding from the state, he has a viable project, are you willing to give him a $3, $3 million loan? And I, I think that's the question he's, he's, he's been trying to ask us every time he's came up here. I agree, it's not on the agenda properly. We don't have the backup material, but that's the agreeing concept of what's going on. I think we, we did have a motion, a resolution that said, yeah, we agreed with the concept, but, and I agree, there's, there's a lot of advice we're going to need from our attorney and, you know, I don't, I don't agree with some of these terms, but, you know, are you willing to invest $3 million to get a $20 million development from the state, roughly?
Right, and, and you will get paid that back, so it's just a short term. Well, you know, up to 17 years, so it's not short term, but medium, intermediate terms. It's not like the state loan, which is a 50-year loan typically, that you can extend it and get up to 50 years out of it, so.
This money, 17.5 million coming into Columbia County is going to help the local economy. Not only would it provide housing for much, a low amount of income individuals, it's just going to help this whole city when this money comes in. I mean.
I, I for one, once again, I think it's a great project, great investment for the community, but all the heads of knowledge needs to get together, bring back the presentation on the 17th, and, you know, I'm committed to the project, but, you know, I'm not going to commit to something right now that I don't know all the details and that I've handed, you know, details as what I see here 10 minutes ago.
Mr. Chair, exactly what is it you need for us, for us to move this project forward?
Mr. Chair?
I got to follow, I got to, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I got to, I'm going to follow, you know, Mr. McCollum, I, and I know you understand what I'm saying, I seen this 10 minutes ago, and this is a $3 million commitment for 17 years. And, and I'm good with the concept. I, I, I support the program again, but you're asking us to make a commitment, as Mr. Foreman just told us, that when we walk away, when y'all walk away from here this afternoon and go to Tallahassee and say Columbia County guaranteed us $3 million, well, it could fall apart. I don't know that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Again, the intent was for you to be presented the terms of the agreement that they're proposing today so that next week you would be able to consider it and possibly vote on it next week or the meeting after that.
Have no problem.
But it would be intended to be scheduled, and we set the agenda tomorrow, and this would be agendatized for the 17th.
I agree 100%. I, I think that's a great idea. I mean, is, are you under that much timeframe? Another meeting is going to kill you?
Well, for me, it's, it's just, you know, it's just travel, but if, if that's, if that's what is required, you know, we're, we're happy to, to do that. We just need to know specifically, you know, what we're missing. Other than, if, if it's just time for you to review the, the, the letter we submitted for this meeting, then that's fine, and, and we understand that. We, we just need to know what, what else you would want to see for, for that.
I'd highly suggest, if you would, because I think Mr. Foreman understands wholeheartedly, after this meeting as soon as possible, you and Mr. McCollum set up a time with him and Joel. I mean, you have any question about what the board will request? I mean, and get it going?
If, if I'm hearing Mr. McCollum correctly, they need something from us that they can carry back to Tallahassee. And so, I don't understand why it's not a three-way conversation, the county, Tallahassee, and the developer, to figure out what exactly is needed from Columbia County to allow the project to move forward. Because I've heard the same thing from this board ever since this has been presented, that the board is highly supportive, but the board can't commit until all the, you know, all the duction are up. And I think there's just questions, and so I would encourage, you know, over this next week or so, to the extent possible, to make these conversations three-way so we know exactly what Tallahassee needs. Can we do that? Can we involve, can we get our lawyer involved in your conversations with Tallahassee?
Yeah, I mean, we could loop in the credit underwriter. They're, they're really, so they're appointed by, by the state for this development for any, any underwriting needs. So, we could definitely do that.
And my other question, are these terms, the only terms that will work, or can you give us some alternate terms?
Uh, well, these are.
I, I think what we, I think what we do, once we get the conversation started with the, with the lawyer, then we make a counter offer on the terms, if they want to do that. I mean, I don't, you know, if we're given $3 million, we should have some say in the terms also. That's my way I feel about it. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
We're talking about all this taking place at our next board meeting?
Unless the board wants.
Here's what I don't want, that's next week.
That is.
Now, let's wait, let's put this off until the first meeting in March. So, we got time, y'all got time to, to go through this thing, because I want to bring it to a head, one way or the other.
Yeah.
They need to know what we going to do, and, and, and let's get everything done and everything cleaned up, put it, and bring it to the board on the first of March with all the things this board is requesting and, and presented, then you have your backup material, your board have any questions that they might think of between now and then, call the attorney or call David and say, what about this? What about that? Let's, let's clean it up, bring it before the board, let the board make a decision so we can move on.
I agree, Mr. Williams. That's a great idea. Is that the first meeting in, in, in March?
That would be March 3rd. That would be March 3rd.
That's what I'm saying.
Is that going to give you enough time?
Time to connect the dots, to communicate.
Is that going to give you enough time, Joel, David?
I, I would defer to the developer. I think they're under a time crunch. I'll accommodate. I'll do everything I can.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that, that won't, you know, that's not going to stop us from being able to get the deal developed. I did want to add one point. On the terms, the reason why we submitted the terms the way they are is it, it mirrors the Florida Housing Loan, the, the competitive one that we received. And, and that's structured as a 1% subordinate loan as well to permanent financing, because we could just, you know, if, if the numbers would work, we could go to the bank and get, instead of the $5 million from the state and $3 million from the county, we could get an $8 million loan from any bank, but the interest rate would kill us and, and then the, the deal would not pencil out. So, happy to walk through.
I guess, I guess what I'm looking to see is, you know, if, if we take, if we take $3 million, the taxpayer money and invest in this project, there's a return on investment, there's a guaranteed return on investment for the taxpayer. We, you know, we got $3 million out there sitting there earning interest, and we know, we know for sure it's going to earn interest and that it's going to bring something back to the taxpayer. There's some failsafe store, if this, if this isn't a viable project, we're protected. I'm concerned about that. I agree with the concept, as long as there's a return on investment for taxpayer dollars. And I think you, you know, if everything checks out, you probably could instruct us to do that, but I, I'm concerned with language like, you know, it's only available after servicing all of the loans and we're subordinate to everything else. I mean, we at least got to be able to get our interest.
So, thank you for mentioning that. So, with the subordinate, the subordination, the interest may not get paid right at that time where, let's say, let's say that the development needs three to four years to catch up on its payments. At that point, before we start distributing any cash flow, it gets automatically, you know, you'll get, let's say it's four years behind, 30,000 a year, you'll get a check for 120,000 right then, if, if that's the year that we catch up. We do have to pay 1% sale interest to the state as well, so we're kind of, we're managing that at the same time. So, so you will get it back. It's a question of when. It could be, you know, we, we, right now, we believe we'll be able to pay it back current day one with our current underwriting. But let's just say that things don't go as smoothly with construction, we will be able to pay you back for sure by the end of, when the loan is, matures, you'll get paid back everything. Let's say that it was a really bad, let's say the whole 15 years was bad and it's $450,000 in interest, you'll get a check at the end for $3,450,000. That would be like if everything, like everything cratered in the development, which has never happened to us before. We've done 40 different developments. We've also never had a foreclosure. So, that, that's the main thing that, you know, as far as security for getting a return on taxpayer dollars.
And I think that's one of the things for myself that makes this thing so appealing is y'all's success rate in the past. So, I think Mr. McCollum teamed up with a good team, but I think. And so, I think Mr. McCollum teamed up with a good team, but I think the direction has been given, and, uh, so, first meeting in March, we'll be ready to rock and roll and make that commitment.
Before we leave, uh, we would like something in writing as far as the procedure of the steps, uh, that we had to take, to make this thing finalize, to put it, buy it together, attorneys from, from the county, attorneys from HTG, from, uh, Grand Lakes City CDC, uh, that way we won't have, have any confusion going forward about what our steps should be for the, for the county commissioners. Uh, we want to do this thing right, so we can get from the county manager, a list that we need to put together, so we can be ready to move forward in March on this project.
Well, and I think, for myself, I think that's right, but I think y'all's personal contact is gonna be our county attorney.
Okay, Joel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so everything we need to bring, Joel, would you provide us a list of what it is we need for to communicate or discuss, or to move this forward, for the county to be comfortable with moving this forward?
So, the, the issue that we're gonna run into, and the reason I think we need to get the Tallahassee folks involved, is you're asking an entity that is not a bank to be a bank, right? So I look at this as conventional financing terms. These are clearly not conventional financing terms, so we need the guidance of the, which said it were the, the funding underwriters in Tallahassee. The, the people we actually need to know from, Mr. McCollum, are those folks.
Okay.
Right? They're the ones who need some go-ahead from us. We need to know what they want to hear, because when I look back and look at the resolution, this to me looks very supportive. When we call out three million dollars, we say we're ready to do it.
Yeah.
All it says is, we're not, we can't really commit yet, because we don't know all the details, but it says we're very supportive. And so if they need something more, if they need a better resolution or anything like that, I think what you're hearing is the board's very receptive to that. But I think that three-way conversation with you guys, your, your credit underwriters, and myself.
Right.
That, that question you're asking right there is the same question I have.
Okay.
What exactly do we need to get the Board of County Commissioners to tell the folks in Tallahassee what they need to hear, so that we can move the ball? I think we're all on the same page on that.
So we'll get together the attorneys, uh, have them, uh, in the state, doing, have them contact you and the county manager, and put this conversation together.
Right. And, and again, I want it to be all of us, right? So not just them calling me, I want you to be there too.
I'll be there.
We all need to be in the same room. I think it'll, it'll, we'll make light years worth of progress.
Uh, I don't know whether it'll be on Zoom or what.
Zoom is fine. Zoom's fine. As long as we can all answer each other's questions.
Yeah.
Joel? Joel, I, I would like to see the bonding information also, and I would like to make sure the county has listed on the bond.
Yes, sir. And, and those are issues, Mr. Ford and, and, uh, Mr. Kraus did tell me, you know, we'll involve our financial advisor and our, and, uh, and Mr. Powell to make sure that, you know, all those kind of issues are being addressed.
Okay, and if I may, what date would we, would you want us to have everything to you by, because I, I know with March first, that's three weeks away, and we'll be in direct communication now, but just, uh, is, is there a time that we need to?
I would say we need the three-party meeting next week, if you can.
Right.
Get that agency to agree to that.
Joel?
Yes, sir.
Did, did I cut the timeframe too short, or do we need to extend this to the second meeting in March? There's a lot of work you guys got to do.
I think it's fine to have an aspirational goal, the third, if something comes up. I tell you what, don't, don't lock it in. We're gonna shoot for the third. If something comes up, we'll all know what the delays are. We'll advise the board.
Okay.
So, yeah, you don't have to bind us to the third today, but I think that's a goal that we should all share.
Okay.
And, and one, one other thing, um, on, on the state, on the deadline, since we're talking about it now, uh, are, we do have a state deadline of submitting a credit underwriting report by June twenty-second. However, we, we will be able to request an extension from the board if necessary. So, uh, we'd like to just, um, you know, a- anything that, that we can do to keep pushing for those early estates is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Chair?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
A couple commissioners mentioned to me they might want to pull.
You what?
One of the items off of the consent agenda.
We want to pull one item off of the consent agenda.
Okay.
That was the one on the Saker grant.
It's, uh, number six, I think.
Which number?
Hold on, I can't remember which number it is.
Nineteen, right?
Yep, nineteen.
Yes.
Nineteen?
Yeah.
Is that, that for discussion or pull completely?
No.
Well, are we gonna pull it completely, or are we gonna?
The board members that talked to me mentioned they wanted to pull it completely, but that's up to the board.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second. All in favor?
Aye. A move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, before we get on discussion, I want to apologize to everybody here and to my fellow commissioners. I had a family issue, and it will not happen again. Sorry about it. Um, and thank you, Tim, for, for standing in for me.
I can't help it, every little way you get your scrambled eggs to you at the Waffle House. Go eat now, go eat.
Okay, the next thing is, Joel, you have something for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Proposal for, proposed agreement for animal control, animal care services. The board has previously conducted workshops flowing from the budget process last year. In the board's January special meeting, you directed Mr. Kraus and I to negotiate with the understanding that it was for animal control, and that the society, the Humane Society could negotiate for funding for animal care services. The contract has been rewritten accordingly. Essentially, you're looking at thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a month for animal control, and the Humane Society is requesting a one hundred thousand dollar allocation to subsidize their animal care services. That's paid in four installments. So this does, uh, I think Commissioner Wittner called out before that we had to make the decision, if we wanted to fund animal care services, this contract does that. If you do not want to fund animal care services, then you would want to, to, uh, strike, excuse me, those portions from the contract, as well as the hundred thousand in funding. But that's the request. Obviously, it's subject to a counterproposal, but Mr. Kraus and I did approve the agreement from our perspective, subject to your approval.
The, the total amount, Joel, of animal care and animal control is a budgeted amount that we already set aside, correct?
It is within budget, yes, sir.
And so the board knows we're going to be working on a workshop related to animal control as part of the budget, probably in March or April, is when I'll ask you to set a workshop. And that would go over cost of everything.
You want to set that workshop now?
Not yet, I'm still in conversations with the chair.
Okay.
But this is to tide us over until October one, so we would have our budget workshop starting on this issue early, so that if the board chooses to go in certain directions, they have time in which to do that.
And, and thank you, Mr. Kraus. I do want to make clear, this is a contract for the remainder of the fiscal year, so this, this is effective with February and goes to September thirtieth, and there is no renewal. So this is, this is basically that transition year that you talked about at the workshop that will allow you to have flexibility to decide what you want to do with animal control for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget cycle.
And I want to, I want to speak to that for just a second, because, you know, we did have a member from the public, you know, drop off a, a large file to us of, you know, concerns, complaints about animal, concerns about animal control as it stands today. We're, we're not ignoring these. We, we realize we have a problem with animal control, but we're in the middle of a budget year, and we can't just tap the brakes and make an immediate change, which is why this, this budget was approved to fund them the rest of this year, the workshop was set up, and, and this board is gonna change, I, well, I feel confident this board at the end of workshop on the next budget year will change the way animal control is handled in, in this county. So, I just don't want you to think we're ignoring you. I did read through your file, and, and, you know, you're not, you're not the, the first person who's given me complaints, and we do take them all serious, which, which is how we knew we had a problem, and, and why we knew we had to address it in the next budget cycle, but we simply can't tap the brakes now and just make an immediate change. So this funds them for this year.
And I will say, I had a thing, Sunday, I had an issue with a dog, it was a really bad issue, and I will say, and I'll give them kudos, animal control did handle it, that, that, everybody, everybody worked together, and, and it was a whole lot more, a lot easier than usual to get it taken care of, and the people are happy, the dogs are gonna be taken, and, and, uh, they were violent animals, so, a- and it really, I, I didn't really realize until I got the videos and saw how a dog acts, that when you're, you're an older or younger, very young individual, it's, it's very scary, and, and watching that video really taught me something about animal control, and how, 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 how bad it can be, and how people really feel like they're trapped in their home. So, so I'm glad that we're going a different way with animal control, and trying to make a better, a, a, a better system, and, and I think we are.
Yeah, and I firmly believe there is a way to, to handle animal control and, and animal care in this county that benefits both the county and the Humane Society's mission, and I, I think that's what we're gonna want to work towards in our next budget cycle.
Do we need a motion or anything?
I think you need that public comment.
Yeah, is there any public comment on the proposed agreement? Okay, come on down.
Hi, I'm Roy Armstrong, lead with two-five-six Southwest Jet Glen, Lake City and Rocky's District. I do work at the Humane Society, I am the adoption counselor, and I'm aware of complaints that, that you receive on animal control. I work on the, on the other end of this whole issue. Animal control is bringing in the animals, taking care of the county, the citizens and all that, and I'm on the end that sees that we take care of the animals, and that they go to new homes, that they're not abused, that they're, you know, they're taken care of. First thing I want to say is I do appreciate now that the board does acknowledge that there's more to taking care of the animals than just picking an animal up and putting it in a kennel. I mean, I, I want to applaud you for, for allocating money for animal services and seeing that there is more beyond that. And again, I'll, I'll remind those who know, it used to be three days, and you were putting them, putting them in the landfill. We're not doing that. We're not euthanizing. There's been recently, I will say, a lot of negativity about the Humane Society and animal control. I mean, a lot. But there's also a lot of positivity. The only problem is, no one sees the positivity. I'm glad that, that the, the chair got to experience a good side of what happens with animal control. When we, we take charge and we do things right, I personally, personally will acknowledge that things weren't always right, but it's got a whole lot better, and a whole lot better, taking care of the animals, taking care of the county people, and all that. But we need to look at, what my concern is, I'll tell you, for me, being in, in the Humane Society, is what I'm hearing is, we got to September, and chances are, this whole thing's gonna go someplace else. Do take a good, hard look at that. And I know there's been studies, and I know there's been studies at other facilities, but also, all I ask is, are we looking at the same apples, apples to apples? A county that we have, with the income and the population we have, and what they do compared to larger cities with deeper pockets and a lot of government money? And we're not getting that here, and we acknowledge that. That's, that's the thing. When people complain about, you need to lower your prices when you do adoptions and all that, we don't receive county money at the Humane Society until now, till you mentioned animal services and that.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, this, this is just an extension, this is an extension, like Toby said, of the budgeted amount. I looked through the negotiated terms, and, and I personally made a statement the last meeting, that in order for me to continue to support this, these were the changes that's gonna have to be made. I don't see these changes in this agreement. You know, there's, I asked for total separation of dollars. I understand the part on the hundred, I made the motion for the increase. I still don't see total separation. I see audits and this and that. They're still working off of a, uh, fund system that apparently is ineffective, because we got constituents going to iVote, trying to distribute dog, give their dogs over there. And I simply asked for that, so I, I'm gonna continue to support the ongoing contract, but I don't think what I personally asked for was, was a whole lot. So, that's, that's my piece, so.
So, so could you define exactly what you're wanting?
I have no idea, I, I have no problem supporting the ongoing contract without the increase, because there's been, there's no change here that I can see, other than the basic, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, on the, they're gonna, they, they agreed to the audit, which they did before. There's not a total separation of accounts, animal control, animal, you know, services and what have you.
Yes, sir, there, there is.
Okay.
It's in, in paragraph sixteen A.
Uh-huh.
In addition to detailed financial statements, segregated costs of animal control from the sheltering and other functions of the contractor shall be provided on an annual basis. So they are supposed to be segregating their funds. They were supposed to be segregating their funds out of the previous contract, so that that's not changed, it's just still in there.
Well, as I told Mr. Rossi, I want two checkbooks.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, I don't see that in.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But, and, and, you know, as recent as last Tuesday, they're still getting a, 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 an answering service. Every other department in this county, you talk to a human being. And of course, I realize animal control is not a county department, but that's not asking a heck of a lot, you know, and I don't see that change.
Well, the, the position of the Humane Society on live response, that is something we did talk about, Mr. Murphy. We, we didn't disregard your, your requests. They felt like they'd have to have two, maybe three more employees that they just can't afford. And so they're gonna, they, they did say they wanted to continue with the process that they're using now, they'll just try to do a better job of it, but it's a funding issue. But even with this additional money, they weren't gonna have the, the, the capacity to add animal control officers to respond.
And I believe they did create a cell phone that they passed between the officers. I don't know that they publicized to the public what that number is, so if the public calls in, they're probably gonna get the answering service.
Why are our constituents calling me wanting to know why iVote wants to take the dog, because ours is closed down?
Yeah.
And they're saying, well, fuck.
Yeah.
And, and definitely not putting gentlemen on the spot, because I don't, are you, are you here to represent? I mean, you got the board authority to represent?
I do not have that.
Okay. Because I definitely don't want to put you in between rock and paper.
I will take every spot you want me to, because I'm not, I'm not the sort of thing. And the only thing I would ask you, there is, for all people, county departments open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day?
Yes, for emergency calls.
For emergency calls, every department.
Every department.
Exactly. Unfortunately, there's staff to do that, and you make it to the business. We, we don't have the funding, these staff, to be open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. I mean, one thing, and what I, what I do, here's to that, is, I can't provide, I can't provide people, how about a number, how many calls do you send? How long does that phone ring? It rings nonstop. And what, what I think is happening a lot, is people are upset with us. I think a lot of this is being exaggerated, because there are people that are upset with us, needing to buy it. However, if we have someone on the phone, you call, you're gonna get, you're not gonna be able to talk to a human being.
Let me, let me ask you something. So you have an answering service that is not a human being? In other words, when somebody... Oh, recorded answering service? Okay, so that's really, okay, I'm thinking answering service like I have from my business, where you call and it's a human being and they go, A1 Bell Bonds, or they say, Humane Society. So it's really an answering machine then? Okay, all right, well, I could, yeah, well, that, in, in my mind, that is not, it's not, I can see people with emergency, I, I can see why they hang up. I do that in businesses all the time, when I call an answering company, I shut down. So I understand what you're saying, people are mad about that and that gets off on a bad foot, so.
Commissioners. Commissioners, we're, we're getting back down into the problems with, 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 with animal control where they stand today. And we can't, we can't fix it today. We're taking this action today so we can go to the next budget cycle and fix it then, when we can fix it.
And, and I'll also share with the board that during negotiations, the, the conversations were, I would say fairly frank. I think Commissioner Kraus, I mean, Mr. Kraus would agree with me. Gosh, I don't think he wants to be a commissioner. I think he would, we were very blunt with both Mr. Rossi and Mr. Williams. You know, this may be the last contract you guys have for animal control. And so, you know, with them knowing that, you know, that they weren't really interested in investing a whole lot of money in enhancing their animal control services. So I, I think in fairness, you know, with, with the county being where we are and understanding the deficiencies that we have and what the constituents want to be addressed, as Commissioner Witt pointed out, this just gets us into that transition window where everybody kind of knows that as of October first, it might be a brand new game. So this is what was negotiated, it was negotiated with full understanding of what your requests were, Mr. Murphy. And I, I don't want you to have the impression we didn't pay attention to your requests, we absolutely did. But this is what they're prepared to do at this level of funding to get us to September thirty.
This is something I'm, I agree with Commissioner Witt, this is something we're not going to fix today, but definitely we need to take all this stuff into consideration when, when we're at this workshop. I, I agree, animal services got to be on call twenty-four hours, seven days a week. But this might be the best we could do at this time, but we, we need to fix that because dogs don't, they don't pick a time and day when they're going to attack, you know what I'm saying? We need to have somebody that can respond at any hour. And, you know, I, I, the only thing I know that really can meet that demand probably is, is the sheriff's office, you know? And I, I think they would probably be willing right now to help in any way they could if there was, if there was some kind of emergency. If, if we could get that call to the, to the sheriff's office. So maybe they could put on a recording, if you don't get anybody in this office, maybe they could call the sheriff's office.
And again, they do have a twenty-four hour cell phone that is answered, but nobody knows the number.
Right. Well, they don't have a whole lot, nobody knows the number.
Mr. Chair, I'll make...
Who calls, who calls it if nobody knows the number?
I, I, I will move to approve the attached contract and engage the Humane Society to provide animal control services and animal care services to the county for the remainder of fiscal year, beginning in September thirty, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that, but I would, when I second that, I would also encourage them to try to work with the sheriff's office to maybe fill in during hours that they can't, they can't be available. I know we have deputies on call twenty-four hours a day, so. I'll add that to my second, that I would encourage them to try to work with the sheriff's office.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, David?
Thank you very much. So the first item on the agenda, or this section of the agenda, is the RFQ twenty twenty-two G, which is for Conflict Council. We had two proposals, one of which is a local firm, one of which is a firm out of Orlando. Staff reviewed them with the attorney and with myself and with Mr. Noel. And our recommendation is to go with Douglas and Douglas.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
I had a conversation this morning with Current Problems, their executive director. She is in agreement with the, has no issues with the agreement that we've drafted. It's a little different than what we had discussed previously. At the board meeting when they did their presentation, we talked, we weren't sure what their current contract was and the board talked about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. Having done that, they then made a presentation to the TDC and the TDC said, well, if it's going to be twenty-five thousand, we'll commit twelve thousand five hundred. And the TDC did vote to commit twelve thousand five hundred. We were later informed by TD's staff that typically they don't spend more than ten thousand on any outside agencies. So when Joel and I got together and drafted the agreement, we lowered it to twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand from the TDC, ten thousand from general funds. Obviously, if the board wants to do twenty-five, we'll increase those. But the budget amendment in here reflects a contract with current services for twenty thousand dollars. It would require current services to do at least four fundraising events within Columbia County every year for the TDC funds.
David, if I'm correct, this, when we used to do this, get a grant for this, it was ten thousand.
Right.
So we are doubling the amount with everything going up.
That is correct.
We are doubling the amount.
We paid them ten thousand dollars for, I think, three to five years. And then the grant expired. So yes, it does double their total receipt.
So I, I, I'll make, I'll make a motion, we approve BA twenty-two dash thirty-five.
Second.
The second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Chair, if I may, before, David, I attended the meeting Tuesday with the city on the dock deal down here. And this was in discussion there of the, you know, the cleanup deal. So I personally will be reaching out to you, you know, me and you'll work together on that to make that one of our first county projects, so to speak, on these lakes. There's, they will be coming back to us, I'm sure, you know, on funding for this, the dock that he proposed here a week or two ago here at the meeting.
Right, you set, at the joint meeting, you set the, that to come up on May third, or on March third.
And hopefully in between now and then, I can get them sat down and actually come up with a, a plan.
David, this meeting on March third, is it going to be a joint meeting with the TDC, the county and the city?
No, the March, the March third is your normal board meeting.
Right.
When we had the joint meeting with the city, one of the directions you gave us was the city was going to consider this at their second meeting in February, we would then consider it at our first meeting in March.
Well, I, I know that, I know they've come to TDC, and I was talking to Paula yesterday and I guess some of them is talking about maybe just having a joint meeting with TDC, represented TDC, county and city to see what kind of funding we could, we'd come up with for each entity. So that way you don't have three separate meetings, you can just have one meeting.
Yeah, if that's what the direction the board wants to do, we'll make it happen.
Let that, whenever I talk to Paula. If we could speed it up, because I mean, they're on a June, I think they're on a June first deadline to be able to come up with the rest of the funding from what they have. But we also need, we need to know exactly about what funds need to be.
So this is on the dock, not on Current Problems?
Correct.
Okay.
But I, I, I got some clarification on that and they basically need a PO, so to speak, for the, because their money, you know, operating due life for fiscal year. So they need to commit that dollar, you know, prior to that and, you know, take a chance losing on the stake side. And I think we can accomplish that because hopefully we're going to meet somewhere towards the end of next week and I'm going to assist them in trying to come up with a, a real plan. And, and that, no charge, this is just on a personal side. And I'm not selling them no profit, yeah.
It, it was my understanding when the presentation was made about the, the dock, that the cost that, that, that was, the money, the amount of money that FD, water gaming fish could put in it and then the balance that was left. And our donations. And, you know, that's, that's where the if is, you don't know how much donations are going to bring in, if any. And then that left a, a, a deficit where if you split it down the middle, it would have been seventy-five thousand dollars a piece from the city and seventy-five thousand dollars from the county. It, it is a passive recreation for, for mostly elderly people that goes on those docks and fish. So, you know, I don't have a problem with funding a portion of it, but we, we need to know exactly how much.
I think we're in the weeds, guys.
Yeah.
Real quick, if I'm going to set up the meeting between the TDC, the board and the city, who do you want to represent the county? I didn't know if you were saying you wanted a commissioner on it.
Say that again?
I didn't know if you were requesting a commissioner to be on that tri-party meeting.
In my opinion, David can be on it, he can report back to all the commissioners instead of one. It's just, that's just more people in the mix.
And we can get that set up next week. We can get that set up next week.
All right, y'all want to move on?
If, if that's okay, we were talking about splitting it three ways between the city, the county and, and TDC plus donation. And here again, the donation is, is, is...
Well, I think, I think FWC, part of that money might be donation.
No, it's, it's appropriated, Ron.
They have a hard one hundred and fifty thousand that they have, they want to appropriate. And they believe the total cost will be three hundred thousand.
Well, David, y'all meet and come back and let us know what we got to do.
Okay, I'll bring it back up next week at the board meeting.
I mean, I would say I think it's important that we get a dock back there. The veterans use that dock for fishing and, you know, it's...
A lot of elderly people.
A lot of elderly people, that's, that's their only recreation, local for fishing. They have it at Watertown too, but I mean, and I think...
So we'll try and get that set up Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday so we can report back next week at the next board meeting.
That'll be good.
And, and one of the things, when having this meeting, I don't know whether it was asked at the presentation, is the maintenance upkeep of that dock, who's going to be responsible for it? Are they going to be, as long as someone is responsible for the upkeep of it, because it, 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 you know, you're putting the dock there, you're not going to be, the maintenance are going to be completely...
Well, my, my understanding when we met at the, at TDC, FWC was going to maintain and keep the clean.
No, no.
Commissioners, we're having a link, we're having a lengthy discussion about something that isn't even on our agenda. We're talking about something that nobody even, that cares is here.
This is going to be before us on the agenda soon, so.
Yeah. So I think David will, will give us all the answers to what we're asking because it's just common sense, you know, upkeep, everything else. So if you want to continue on, David, I appreciate it.
Okay.
And, and, and I don't have a problem with Commissioner Murphy being at the meeting, if he wants to be there, because he has a lot of...
Experience.
Experience building docks, I mean, obviously, he's built thousands of docks.
This is going to be wood, though.
All the team gets his way, Ron.
Okay, David, we can go back, we can go back to the agenda now, thank you.
He, he's not going to be able to light his torch on this one.
So the next item on the agenda is RFP twenty twenty-two C, which is for grant administration of the housing rehab project. There were two responses. The committee voted to rank Guardian CRM the top firm. We're asking you to approve the ranking and allow us an award, the contract, which was in your package.
I make a motion, we approve the contract with Guardian.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Okay, the next one is twenty-two R oh six, which is a utility price index. You adopt these price indexes every year, has to be done by resolution, it's always from April first to March thirty-first. So we're basically asking you to approve the one for next year. The rate went up drastically this year, based on the Consumer Price Index. The PSC set their rate as four point five three. Typically, we adopt their rate, you do not have to, but our recommendation would be to approve this resolution with the rate of the four point five three as approved by the Public Service Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move the dock revolution number twenty twenty-two R dash zero six.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
So the next item is actually the next two items because they're related. Lance Utility is a firm that we ended up having to go to court and appoint a receiver, the receiver being Florida Utility Services One. It has been operating in a deficit, so they are asking first for a reimbursement of the funds that they had to extend over the amount of revenues collected. And then the second thing is they want to do a rate increase. They originally requested the rate increase with the price index, but as we just adopted it, it doesn't take effect until April. So we would recommend, one, the first motion being the reimbursement. And then, in case you're curious here, from the, their filings, is what their rate increase would reflect. So you can see how much it will go up. The utility only has forty-three residential customers and their average demand is four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three gallons per month. Most residential customers have a three-quarter inch connection. So you can see basically at a three-quarter inch connection, their base bill will go from twenty-seven thirty-one to thirty dollars and sixty-two cents and the per gallon, because they'd be under five thousand gallons, would go up from thirty-nine forty-three to their total bill would end up being fifty-three oh six if they use three thousand more gallons beyond the original.
I, I'd like to go ahead and have the public comment from Mr. Hill because it directly relates to him. Come on up, my friend. Name and address, might be somebody here that doesn't know you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeffrey Hill, nine zero eight Southeast Country Club Road, Lake City, Florida. Now, the request, number six and seven, item six and seven states LLC for Lance Water. It should say receiver, I don't know if he's an LLC or not. Now, when the Water Management District claimed to abandon this water system, you need to know they resolved allocation of fifty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the transition and the operation of the water system. The city of Lake City has already gotten fifteen thousand of that money a year and a half ago. That money's allocated for the purposes of number six and seven. The very purpose of a receivership is to maintain the status quo. Status quo means leave it like it is, operate it like it is. When the Swanee County Court granted the receivership requested by the county, the receiver promised to maintain the status quo. The county's lawyer even stated to the court that the receiver was ready, willing and able to maintain the status quo. Status quo means leave all the rates like they are, is to operate and keep the property or the business, whatever it may be in receivership, like it is, maintain status quo. I request you don't, don't give the eighteen thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars to the receiver until we meet as reasonable people about the water system because Lance Hill now intends to sue for his rights under the Takings Clause and the Due Process Clause of the Constitution. Also, this county is already a defendant in my civil rights action and the county should be aware that the Water Management District this week resolved to appraise, divide and sell the land and keep the subject pond drained forever. Water management is your co-defendant in my civil rights action. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, David.
Any discussion? Joel, as a, an oversight, if, and I know we've been through this several times, but just for everybody's benefit, give us a real quick breakdown of the day that Ben got... give us a real quick breakdown of the day that Ben got called about electricity being turned off and how we got into receivership and everything, if you don't mind.
So I'll give you a quick procedural history. We were informed by the water management district, uh, I wanna say it was late sixteen, early seventeen, that we had an abandoned utility within Columbia County. And the water management district notified us this because there's a statute that says if you're a county and you have an abandoned utility within your territorial limits, you have to go out and appoint a receiver to make, to take care of that utility if you can't take care of yourself. And so we understood that that was the position we were gonna go, that we were gonna have to take. We didn't exactly mash the gas. Um, as we moved forward, there came a time where half the customers served by this utility woke up one day with no water. And the way this utility works is it serves two subdivisions. They're not next to each other. They're, they're some distance away. Um, the, uh, belief was that the connection between these two subdivisions had somehow been turned off. The electricity been turned off or the pump wasn't working, whatever the case may be. In order to get in front of a judge, to get an order to try to restore that connection, we had to go ahead and pull the trigger on the receivership, which is what we did. Um, and so we filed, we got an order. While that order was in process, Mr. Kraus, then not the county manager, but he was working closely with the city, was able to find an alternative water source for the subdivision that had lost that, that lost connection to the utility. And so that order went away, but we still, the receivership was now underway, right? So in order for us to take jurisdiction over. The abandonment of the utility occurred in two thousand sixteen when the Department of Environmental Protection brought enforcement proceedings against the owners of Lance Water. And that enforcement action concluded with the owners of Lance Water entering into a consent final judgment with the Department of Environmental Protection, saying they would no longer operate the utility, would no longer build the utility. They're not gonna do anything with the utility. It is abandoned. That became part of the consent final judgment in that case. So the way it works with final judgments in Florida is once they're rendered and once thirty days pass and there's no appeal of those final judgments, they're basically the law of the land, right? The, the facts that are determined in those consent, in those final judgments are facts. They're, they're done. They're, they're indisputable. So long as that final judgment continues in force and effect and the utility is abandoned, we're under obligation to keep it in receivership, okay, by statute. The argument's been made that because the water management district owned the well on which the utility was serviced, from which the utility was serviced, that the water management district should've had to operate the utility. Water management district has pointed to statute saying they're not authorized to be a water services provider. Never mind the fact that the statute says that the county has to be the receiver. So we've got that going for us. We have not moved to close this receivership, to close out the receivership, to allow the receiver to determine whether or not he can pay for it and buy it because there are continuing negotiations with the owners of Lance Water for other matters relating to the property, which Mr. Hill just made reference to. Other property the water management district owns around there that used to belong to Mr. Hill. We don't wanna wrap up the receivership. We don't wanna conclude that until such time as all negotiations for potential resolution of Mr. Hill's issues with the water management district are concluded. So, yes, it was the disconnection of the water that prompted the county to move forward. The county has not accelerated or concluded the receivership, again, in deference to Mr. Hill so that we can try to continue to negotiate for some sort of resolution. In any other circumstance, this receivership probably would've been wrapped up by now.
Gotcha.
And this would be a privately owned utility again. So that's where you are. Um, I certainly understand the desire to litigate and fight. Uh, I know this is family property. I'm, I'm not obtuse. I'm not, you know, oblivious to that. But we have an obligation as the local government to move the way we have. Uh, and we've done everything we're supposed to do as required by law with as much deference we can afford.
So out of this eighteen, thank you, Joel. I think that cleared it up pretty good. Uh, on the, uh, eighteen thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars here, David, is, is there a potential for Swanee River Water Management to reimburse us for that?
I do not know.
Mm-hmm. Would there be an attempt? Can I ask?
I'll certainly reach out to them, yes.
I mean, because, uh, you know, I think Joel just made it pretty clear. And I, and I, I, looking at the numbers, I understand the gentleman's request. But the, uh, and I also understand exactly what Mr. Hill just said. But, you know, Swanee River put us in this position. I think they'll be, you know, uh, for judgments that they may have made right or wrong in the past, however, got us all to this point, uh, I feel like it's their bank account ought to pay it. So I have no problem keeping the ball rolling, but I would like to go on record to say that I'd like for you to seek out.
So, so where's the balance of this fifty-something thousand dollars? Where's it at?
Our management's still holding it, waiting for someone to ask for it.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's, that, that was, Rocky beat me to my point, but, you know, it, it's sitting there and, uh, we might as well go after it.
Commissioners, it, it's unfortunate we continue to be here. We, we had what we thought was gonna be a solution to the problem, pretty much negotiated a couple of months ago. Um, you know, they, that agreement's been changed and, and it was something we thought we couldn't live with. But we did have a solution that, that probably would've worked for all sides as far as water management goes, restoring the pond, county taking control of the pond, uh, and, and the dike and having a county park there and, and an avenue for in the next five years, if litigation stops, to where the county could, could take the Hill property and possibly negotiate with Mr. Hill to give him his family farm back. And I, I think there's a lot of personal feelings with water, water management. They get in the way because Mr. Hill is fighting and litigating and, 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 and I guess that, that makes them mad. Uh, I personally don't understand that concept because of the county commission. We get sued all the time. And if you sue the county, I don't take it personal, but I think there's some people on that board, water management board that do. We sent letters to the governor to intervene and, and, and I, and I wish, I wish, I wish something would get to the governor and he would intervene in this because, you know, end of the day, where, whatever wrong was done by both parties, this all started with a simple permit. We all know the story. A simple permit that, that, that should never have been pursued this hard.
I agree.
And, 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 and water management was wrong in doing that back then. And, you know, they, there's multiple avenues for them to fix it if they'll just step up and be men and fix it and leave their personal feelings at home. And, and I'm, I'm disappointed in our water management and, and, and I wish, I hope that somebody in the press gets this to, to the governor's office. Because we've sent him letters, but I mean, I, I, short, short of him intervening, I don't know what's gonna solve this, but we've been fighting this battle for twenty years now almost. It is time to put this to bed and, and, and they're hurting the county. So I, I do agree that we need to go to water management and have them pay this. And, and until that fifty thousand dollars is exhausted, anything that utility needs to run, needs to come from, from that, from that part of money.
You know, this might be something, in my opinion, we might need to table and, and get a little more education. I'm a little confused about the whole, I wasn't here when all this happened and I'm a little confused about it. But, but, I mean, we can move on or do whatever we want. I would need, you know, a motion for that, but I, I really don't. I'm just gonna tell you, I'm a little ignorant about this. I've, I've, I've studied it and I don't know the whole background that you're talking about, so.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the sake of clarity, I think Mr. Foreman also has a comment on this. Any decision you make, we still have to take back to the court. So ultimately, these decisions are going to be decided through the court.
And, and the other thing that, while we've been deferential on this utility issue because of the other issues with water management district and the Hill family, this is really a distinct issue, right? So the abandonment happened in a DEP enforcement proceeding, not the water management district. Um, and it was that, the water management district brought it to our attention. That was pretty much the extent of their involvement. Um, we sued them because the, they're actually defendant in this case, that the well is on their property. So we actually had to sue them to get use of the well. The receiver is our receiver. Right? So he's working at our behest. He's court appointed, but we asked for it. So I don't think there's any, anything wrong with tabling it or finding, but I, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that these issues are tied. They're related because we say they are, but they're not legally related.
Well, and, and, and the most important issue is you got forty-two water customers that need safe, reliable water.
That's the.
Regardless of what's going on with the, with, with Mr. Hill or anything else or the water, you know, you still got those forty-two customers that need water.
And that is the only issue for the county is that the people who are connected to the utility continue to receive water. That is the only issue.
They are sincere.
One last thing. Lance Hill didn't have anything to do with any abandonment or that DEP case or that court order he talks about. Lance didn't know, didn't have anything to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Well, do we have any more discussion?
I mean, I, I say we grant the, the request, but we go to water management, we send the bill to water management.
So the, the, we need to take them one at a time. So I guess the first one is the reimbursement of the eighteen thousand seven ninety-one.
I guess, I guess here's my question. If we table making this payment until, until we can contact water management and say, we think you ought to pay this at that fifty thousand dollars, does that interfere with him providing water services in the, in the next month or two?
Are the people gonna be able to have water?
I mean, he'll still provide water. He'll just continue to run a deficit and the request for reimbursement will increase.
Well, I, I'm, I, I'll make a motion. I motioned to table this, but.
So, okay. I think we approved the, um, rate increase, but we tabled the eighteen thousand.
That, that's what we're talking about, number six. We're not.
So right now, we're talking about, yes, the.
We're talking about reimbursement right now.
Just the reimbursement.
I, I'm, I'm, I moved to table that. Second. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, if you can say table until when? I think you're saying table until we can get answers from the water management.
Table it until we can get answer from the water management. We shouldn't take.
Yes, sir.
Um, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now, let's go with a rate increase now. Go ahead, Ms. Kraus.
Oh, the request is, do you want to? My recommendation would be to approve the rate increase. Um, finance looked at it. We looked at it. It seems reasonable, um, without the price index because the price index does not become effective.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the rate increase for our utility services.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Now, David, and if you know the answer behind Joel, in the event that Lance Water Systems, the previous owner ends up this, that rate increase will stay with future operation out there.
It's with the utility. Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. And it's something, without the court, you would set normal.
Okay.
Uh, it's just because it is in receivership, the court actually has to approve it. So even though you adopted the rate increase, we still have to present it to the court. The court has to approve.
I figured it out, so I just wanted to be spoken.
But yeah, it would stay with the utility.
And Joel, isn't it possible, couldn't Lance Water go back to the DEP and is, isn't there a path for, if they want to run the utility, to get it back, get it out of receivership?
I've shared it with you. I believe I've shared it with, with Lance Hill before. But, you know, if there's a mistake or if there's something in the DEP enforcement action that would authorize that court to set aside that, that judgment, right? Uh, Mr. Hill just made the statement that Lance Hill had nothing to do with that DEP enforcement action. The face of the document references the license number and everything like that. So there's really not much I can do with that. You have to go back to that judge that signed the order and ask him to set aside the final judgment. There's procedural mechanisms to request that. But again, so long as the final judgment is of record and it has not been appealed or set aside, it's the final judgment. So, yes, you're correct. If, if the, if the abandonment was somehow undone, then we're no longer on the hook for taking care of an abandoned utility. But that bill has to be unrung.
Fair enough.
Great. The next item?
Yep, move ahead.
Is BA two-two thirty-one, which is ARPA budget revisions. Based on what we talked about previously, what this will do is it will put ten million dollars into, from ARPA for reimbursement of lost revenues. That is the standard deduction that is established in the current final rate. And the rest of the items are just moving the things around to reflect that which we did. We did that, reported that on the January report. And so this is just to move the money accordingly. Um, it was prepared by the clerk's office, reviewed by Amy and myself, and, uh, we recommend approval of budget amendment two-two thirty-one.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And then finally, the library collection development policy revisions. Um, last time it was done was two thousand seven. Quite frankly, was out of date. They reviewed it with counsel, Mr. Foreman, and they're asking for your approval of the new policy.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Then you had two additions, I believe, that was brought up at the beginning of the meeting. The first one, uh, brought up by Commissioner Ford was to authorize the county to go ahead and purchase the supplies necessary for a connection between Ellisville and the town of Fort White.
So, so what, what my thoughts were, uh, we know there's a backlog right now, about six months on ordering material or getting material. Uh, to speed this, uh, process up, uh, I would like for the board to authorize the county to go ahead and order the material for the pipe running from Ellisville to Fort White. And, uh, uh, North Florida Professional Services has agreed to provide us a material list that's, that'd be needed for the job. And we can, uh, store the material at the job site. And when we bid the job, we can just bid it for, uh, for labor only. Which would save us some money also by purchasing the material ourselves on sales net.
I, 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 I agree with that. Uh, it's just the, the timeline of getting material now is, 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 is so long. And then we save the tax on, on the material anyway, so it's a good move to do so.
We received a twenty-four month, uh, estimation on, on this, on completing this project. And he said six months was tied to material, so it could potentially cut six months off of that project.
Do I have a motion?
Well, Mr. Kirby, do you have anything to add to that?
As you and I discussed earlier, this is a real simple for two reasons, cost savings and time. And we have plenty of room at Ellisville, which is where we're gonna start the project. So as far as a lay down area for this material, it's win-win all the way around.
Is there any estimate, Mr. Ford, at this time?
Well, the, the money's set in an account for it. I mean, we don't know the exact cost of material, no. But, uh, the, the, uh, we know, we already approved and budgeted the money for the job.
Correct.
Did, did anybody, uh, put any, have we put any numbers to the purple pipe? You know, it was suggested by, by a member of Swanee River Water Management that we should uh, think about laying the purple pipe down as we doing construction of the water line. Have we, have we did anything on a call for the purple pipe?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Kirby.
Commissioner Murphy, before I answer Commissioner Williams, we're in the process of all that. I guess I'll answer both of them. But at the end of the day, I think what Commissioner Ford's alluding to, we've got the money approved, money's in the budget or in the line item. We know we're gonna do the project. So I'm of the opinion, these materials aren't going backwards. So to answer your question, Commissioner Williams, we're working through those numbers. And to answer your question, we've not put all of it together yet, but North Florida's supposedly working on that as we speak. But at the end of the day, this is just a real good, common sense move. We know we're gonna do the project, right? So we've got the place to store the material in Ellisville. So I think it's a win-win. Commissioner Williams, to answer your question, we're working on those numbers also. About the purple pipe.
We have a motion.
So I, I make a motion, we go ahead and get a material list from, uh, North Florida Professional Services and, uh, oh, go ahead and, uh, allow purchasing to, uh, by these, by this material.
Do that include the purple pipe too?
If we have a, if we have a list on the purple pipe at that time, yes.
So it, it just makes sense to be able to, to put that pipe in for reused water. That gives us the ability to add to our cup by being able to have that in place.
But we don't know the exact route of where the purple pipe would need to be installed at this time. I mean, it, it. I mean, it, it probably would be more into residential and commercial areas for irrigation. This here, this here line here is going to provide water from Ellisville to Fort White.
Well, you're still, you're talking about using that same water for recharge.
Yeah, but it would be recharged back to two B. Most of it, like we did out of Southside, where we brought the purple pipe to Southside, the city hadn't used yet, that was to irrigate the fields and all of them. And like I say, it hadn't been used yet, but usually reclaimed water is used for irrigation and stuff like that.
You get, okay. It just makes sense to do all of it at one time.
As much as we can, yeah. While we're digging, they'll both, I agree, I agree, wholeheartedly.
Because that's how you increase your cup in order to draw water out of the aquifer and get a permit to do so by the amount of water we, we can recharge and reuse.
Did you get a second? If not, I'll second, I motion.
I don't, I did, okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And you had one other addition by Commissioner Williams referring to a street.
I, I've got a little street, and I don't, under the grant that we had, under the Falling Creek Water Shed, part of that grant was to go in and do all the streets in the Five Pond area and put in new covers. We did all of them, I found one street that was giving less than a half a block long, if not a half a block long.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
What Commissioner Williams is referring to, at the next meeting, he requested me to add two more lists for repaving in his district. One of those is, more like Oakland, which is right down from my shop. It is about a quarter of a mile long. It is in complete disrepair. We're going to have to do what we call full depth reclamation. Though it's only a quarter of a mile, based on the road that we did in Commissioner Hollingsworth District Huntington, it's very like and similar, but it's completely in disrepair. When I told him it was about using those same schedule of values, it was about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar price tag, he had a heart attack, and for lack of a word, and he said, my lord, he said, what in the world's going on? I said, Commissioner, you've got to completely rebuild the road. So he asked me, well, if you go in and self-perform all the work with exception to asphalt, striping, and sod, he just asked me, what can I do in-house? So if I take all that out, it's going to be about an eighty-five thousand dollar price tag versus a hundred and forty-two thousand dollar based on the schedule of values we did Huntington with. I am prepared on the seventeenth to bring that for you guys as consideration, Mr. Williams, if that helps you any.
We, and what I'm asking for is to let Kevin go in there and, and, and mix that in, lay it back down, and then pave it. I'm, I'm paying too much money on maintenance of traffic and mobilization when I'm right down from the office.
So I guess what Commissioner Williams is asking you, do you want me to come at the next meeting for consideration for in-house performance and only contract out those things we're not capable of? Does he have support for that? Or do I present at the next meeting the contracting the entire project out? I think that's the question he's asking.
Ron, you said, on that previous project where they did all that drainage work, you're saying there's money left over and that?
No, no, I paid for it myself, I might pay.
Oh, okay, I got you.
But we just missed that street when we redone all that, that little old street right, it's all kind of setting off by itself. And what I was trying to do was save the maintenance, the maintenance, traffic, and mobilization. Did a contract that was bid, and we were right there at the office. It's right there, just, well, just past Kevin, Kevin Thomas Tire Place going to the office. There's a little old short street in there, and we missed that and it just tore all the difference.
I know exactly the street you're talking about.
I was just asking the board, would, would it be all right if Kevin go in there and grind it in and, and lay it back down and we get out asphalt on it?
Might be a good area for him to train some of them new employees, how to run that equipment.
So I, 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 I'll make a motion to authorize Kevin to fix that little quarter of a mile street in there to get it ready for paving.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, do we have any open public comments to the board? Seeing we have none, staff comments? Commissioner comments? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
All right.